We have seven items up for discussion tonight. We're going to go in order as you see them on the screen. And so we will start with the sale of town-owned property on 1148 South Street. And I'm going to turn it over to Bill Hawkins. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Colin. Can every -- there we go. Good evening, everybody. As Colin mentioned, my name is Bill Hawkins. I'm Director of Planning and Development. So first item up here, 1148 South Street, the sale of that property. So this is a 21-acre piece of property that the town's owned off of South Street. Since about 25 years ago, it was part of a larger 63-acre tract of land. Town subdivided it in 2017 into four parcels, giving this property the current configuration it has today. So it's been on the market ever since. It's owned for light industrial uses. All utilities are available to the property. It does share a driveway with the building at 1150 South Street. You can see that on the map. The property is outlined in red. And just for some further context, to the south on that map, you'll see what used to be the valet parking facility. So that's where the property is located. We have an offer from Martin Downey from West Hampton, Massachusetts. He represents a group of investors that would like to purchase the property. So here is a concept plan that was put together by Mr. Downey. He worked with Fussin' O'Neil to give an idea of what they are looking to build, which is about a 20,000-square-foot building for ice hockey training. It's a permitted use in the zone. We estimate taxes from such a building to be about $46,000 a year. The offer for the property is $515,000. And the sale would be contingent on a number of things, including local land use approvals, including utilities, Conservation Commission, planning and zoning, state approval is necessary, you know, to connect to certain utilities that might be in the road. We would also enter into a purchase and sale agreement, provided the approval is given tonight by the town. And another thing to point out on this site plan, it's sort of tucked in behind the building at 1150 South Street. I tried to label that. But just to point out that it is a 21-acre piece of property. This building's sort of tucked into one area. So the idea is that future development of the parcel and other phases, you know, has potential. So that's the reason that they're putting it or showing it in that location. So there's potential for more buildings and possibly some more tax revenue associated with it. To get here tonight, you know, it's been since 2024 that we've been working with Mr. Downey. The Economic Development Commission recommended the sale to the Board of Selectmen back in June of last year. Board of Selectmen approved the sale at a special meeting on May 6th this year and referred the transaction to town meeting for final approval. As I mentioned, next steps would include executing a purchase and sale agreement and then moving forward with the local land use approvals and then further to build the property out. So that, I think, is -- yeah. That's the presentation on that one. Happy to answer any questions there may be.
Thanks, Bill. For questions and comments, we're just going to start right to left, my right, your left. So if there's any questions or comments, please raise your hand. Start on the right. Anything over here? I see a hand.
Melissa Silva, 203 Radley Road. Do we know, or the children can be able to use that, it's going to be open use for the ice hockey rink?
That's a good question. So Bill Hawkins here again. I think initially, they are not going to be open to the public. It's more for private, you know, lessons and groups. In the future, though, I think that's open, you know, to discussion, but not initially.
Okay. And do you know, would the schools be able to use it, even though it's not open to the public per se? Like, if the schools start a ice hockey team?
Yeah, I think that would be on the table.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any question, any more questions on the right here? All right, seeing none in the middle, I see one hand.
Kathy Balanco, 981 East Street North. Is that a full-size hockey rink, or is it a practice rink?
So this is a practice rink. It's not a full-size.
Okay. That's what I --
It's geared more towards youth, younger children, so it's not a full-size rink.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments here in the middle? All right, seeing none, I'll move to the left. Are there any questions or comments over here? All right, seeing none, we will move to the next item, which is the lease of town-owned land to Veragee. And I'm going to turn this back over to Bill Hawkins.
All right. Thank you, Colin. Yep, so this is leasing, or the request of the town tonight is to lease in town-owned land to Veragee. Veragee is a West Hartford-based clean energy company specializing in solar development. You know, we are looking to lease approximately 5.8 acres of the town-owned property just to the north of the transfer station to them to build a solar array. And so we thought it made sense, before I get into more of the discussion about the array and the lease, to have, we have a representative from Veragee here tonight, Brian Fitzgerald, their Director of Development, and he can kind of walk you through a little bit more about the company and our relationship with them for a minute here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Bill. Like Bill said, my name is Brian Fitzgerald. I'm the Director of Development at Veragee. We're a West Hartford-based solar developer, installer, and operator projects here in Connecticut and across New England. We work with a number of towns in the state and own and operate projects for them on rooftops and other landfills and other greenfield properties across Connecticut. More specifically, we own and operate projects for West Hartford, West Haven, Litchfield, and a number of other community solar style and SCF projects in Enfield, Connecticut, North Haven, and landfill projects in Middletown, Montville, and Deep River, Connecticut. We have, excuse me, we have about a half a dozen more landfill projects like this one, you know, in various stages of development. Some have deep permits and others are starting construction here shortly. So we've had a lot of experience working in these types of projects over the last few years. And again, we do own and operate these projects for the long term. But with that, Bill, I could pass it back to you.
Great. Thank you, Brian. And I just want to say that our relationship with Veragee has been great so far. We've been working with them for a while, which I'll touch on in a second. So again, here tonight to discuss leasing 5.8 acres, indicated on this map in the area outlined in green and labeled as approximate lease area. Again, that's approximate. We have site plans and the lease has a map that has more specific dimensions. But just to give you a sense of the area we're talking about in relation to the transfer station, which is shown just to the south of that or below it, and then neighboring properties around, you know, the landfill property itself. So again, the purpose of this is to build a 0.9-megawatt solar array. And here's the next slide, Colin. So this slide is, it shows one sheet from the approved site plan for the solar array, zoomed in on that area that is proposed to be leased more specifically. So we started working on this back in 2022, when I say we, town staff. I started getting a lot of calls from solar developers. They were asking about town properties, would we ever be interested in leasing property, building a solar array? And it was intriguing. And I have zero experience in this field. There was really no other town staff that did. So because of that, we had to get some help. And so we, I was referred to Kurt Mayland, who's sitting here at the table tonight. Kurt is our consultant. He's also an attorney. He lives in this world. He understands it inside and out. He's been, if we didn't have Kurt, I'm not sure we'd be here tonight with his expertise. We also have Kevin Sullivan sitting next to Kurt. You may know Kevin. He's a town resident, but he has also helped advise us on this. He is a developer. He's built solar arrays. He knows what questions to ask. He's been involved in several meetings. He's been extremely valuable to get us here tonight. So working with Kurt, the town developed a request for proposals. That was all done in 2022. The Board of Selectmen met and approved that request for proposals back in 2022. And Veragee was selected through that process in the fall of that year. The Board of Selectmen also approved the selection of Veragee at a meeting in December of 2022. Since that time and now, there's been a lot that's happened behind the scenes, and there's been a lot of meetings where it's been discussed with the Board of Selectmen, with the Planning and Zoning Commission, with Conservation Commission as well. And part of that included some, an interconnection study that was completed by Veragee that's needed to connect to the grid or to find out what they needed to do to connect to the grid. Project acceptance into the Eversource Program, ENRES, which stands for Non-Residential Renewable Energy Solutions, which is difficult to get into, that was done. In terms of the town, what we've been doing, we've done some wetlands delineations, we've had some survey work done, obviously negotiating the lease, and also land use approvals with planning and zoning and the Conservation Commission. So there's been a lot that's happened. And then throughout that time, there's been periodic meetings with the Board of Selectmen, at least once in 2023, once in 2024, a couple of meetings this year, total of eight meetings with them in total, in total. So there's been a lot of discussion on this. There's been articles in The Observer, I think recently, in the past few months. So the word has been out there. And the last point in this slide is the property is considered part of the landfill. And the previous slide, I mentioned that the town owns about 93 acres, and the landfill is on one of, one of those parcels. And the state considers the adjacent parcel as part of the landfill. So the town purchased those two pieces of property, including this one, back in the mid-'90s. Reason for that was to control those properties so that we would minimize any liability from any pollution issues that might arise from the landfill. So when you have a landfill, you have things like gas migration from, you know, the trash that's degrading, and also what's called leachate, which is what happens when landfill gets rained on, runs through all that trash, and then the water that comes out of it is contaminated. And that could impact groundwater. And so there's what's called a leachate plume. And back in the minutes from the mid-'90s, when the property was buying, or when the town was buying these properties, they identified that this could be a problem, we should own these properties, control them. So this, where the solar array is proposed, is on one of those properties, it's considered part of the landfill. There's a benefit to that, which I'll touch on in a little bit, in terms of the revenue that we get from it. And while I'm on this slide, I'd like to, I've been, become aware of several questions and some comments about the project that I think I'll try to address here. And then, of course, we have questions and answers in a little bit. But this property, or this slide shows, you know, the area where the array is going to go. And the closest panels to the road are about 160 feet. The first 50 feet of natural vegetation from the road into the property will be maintained, except, of course, where the driveway is going to be cut in. That's to provide a natural buffer, to the extent that 50 feet will do that. In terms of, I've been made aware of some concerns about possibly fire department and their ability to, you know, fight a fire should there be an issue here. I spoke with the fire captain. There's, there's no concerns from their perspective. Obviously, there's no public water in this part of town, but they have the equipment to handle that. Much of town doesn't have public water. So it's no different from a house that might catch on fire where there's no public utilities nearby. They have the trucks. There's a pond designated for fire department use a little more than a half mile away. So in speaking with them, they didn't have any concerns about responding to a fire, you know, for this property. Stormwater, there is a question about stormwater, making sure it's not impacting neighbors in the area. So obviously, when the site plan's approved, our consultant town engineer reviews all of that. And that's been thoroughly vetted. This plan shows you, can't really point to it, but on the left-hand side, there's those areas where stormwater will be directed. Those are detention basins. So obviously, the, the point of developing a site is to ensure that water's not leaving the site at a greater volume or rate than pre-development conditions. And this site's been designed to do that. So the water will go where it has always gone, which is to the northwest, and it will be leaving the site, you know, no greater than it did before the property was developed. There's also an operation and maintenance plant for the stormwater system, and that indicates what needs to be done periodically to make sure it's operating properly. And that's something that the town can enforce if it becomes an issue. There's a question about lighting. There is no lighting proposed with this, so there'll be no lights at the property. Nothing will be lit up at night. These panels are American-made. They do not contain any heavy metals. And Veragee provided what's called a toxicity characteristic leaching procedure test results for these panels, basically saying as such, there are no heavy metals in them. So if something were to happen, there's not going to be any issues from that perspective. There is no battery storage associated with this, so no lithium ion considerations or lithium ion batteries that might be an issue. Sound was also mentioned. And so part of these developments includes inverters, and that takes the electricity, it converts it into the voltages required to be, you know, added to the lines on the street. Those can make a low humming sound during the day when the panels are producing energy. So obviously, at night, there's no sound. But with this, the inverters are located about 250 feet from the road. They're behind a stockade fence and other plantings, so we don't anticipate any issues with sound coming from this property. In terms of traffic, obviously during construction, there will be some traffic with the trucks coming and going and building the site. However, once that's done, other than maintenance and periodic visits by Veragee or their people to check on the facility, there's not going to be much traffic coming in and out, a handful of times a year, ten, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, Bill. A good way to think about it is, you know, once a month, and these will be light-duty pickup trucks that would come out and perform operations and maintenance visits along with, you know, the standard landscaping maintenance that would need to occur as well.
All right. Thank you. There was a question about possible disruption to radio networks or cell tower networks in the area, and that's not a concern. You know, this project will connect to the electric lines on the road. So the voltage has to meet, you know, be the same as the existing voltage, is whatever is out there that supplies power to your house, to other neighboring properties. So it's not as though it's going to be a higher voltage or a great problem. So there's no issues anticipated in terms of cell networks or radio networks in the area. There was a question about historic properties. There are some very beautiful historic homes across the street from here. There's historic homes all over Southfield. But, you know, with what's been done with keeping a natural buffer, also the stockade fence and then the plantings that will be in front of that fence, we've tried to be sensitive and responsive to some of the concerns of the neighbors. I should point out that I met with, Kevin Sullivan and I met directly with the five people that live across the street months ago to tell them about this project. We heard some of their feedback, and there have been changes to the plans based on that. And I'll touch on that in another minute. There was a question about the environmental impact of, you know, the project. So obviously, there's disturbance of the property to build it. There's going to be about 10.8 acres that would be cleared in total for shading purposes. There's going to be, you know, disturbance to the landfill grading and then building the facility. What we did do, you know, there was, the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection has what's called the Natural Diversity Database Maps, and that is a map that they have for every town. It shows federally listed species or critical habitats. There is none of that in this area. In terms of the wildlife that might be there, you know, there's, you know, I've heard from neighbors, there's a lot of birds and probably bear and deer. There's hundreds of acres of undeveloped land in this area. Obviously, again, with the disruption for construction, that will be, you know, there would be some disturbance there. But once it's built, it's a pretty low operational impact, you know, of the occasional maintenance person and, you know, not a lot of traffic, it would be pretty quiet. So from that perspective, you know, with the site design, we think that there's not going to be much of an impact. That's about it on some of the concerns that I've heard have been raised. So the more recent meetings where this has been discussed and approvals include the Board of Selectmen approving the lease and referring it to town meeting. That's the reason we're here tonight, to talk about the lease and approve it. And with regard to that, I had mentioned that Kurt Mayland, our consultant, has been working with us on this. He's, I also mentioned, he's an attorney. He was the primary, you know, point of contact with negotiating the lease. We also have our town attorney, Derek Donnelly, who reviewed the lease before the Board of Selectmen to ensure that the town's interests were protected. The lease is solid, and then, of course, Veragee and their legal team reviewed it. So we wouldn't be here tonight if we didn't think that the lease was solid. It was also on the town website, and I'm going to, the next slide has some key provisions in the lease. So hopefully, people have had a chance to review that. In terms of the regulatory commissions, you can see here, Conservation, Planning and Zoning recently approved it. Both groups held public hearings. We heard some concerns from the public, and changes were made to the plans based on those concerns. And I mentioned the seven-foot stockade fence that was installed originally. It was going to be chain-linked, and that was meant to help screen the array, you know, more from the road. And then plantings will be placed in front of that to soften the look of the fence. So those changes were made. Also, the driveway location was changed in, in response to a better concern. It was moved about 200 feet to the south, and it's in front of the property at 2776 Mountain Road. But that house sits back a couple of hundred feet, and they have a substantial wooded buffer between their house and the road. So it's unlikely they'll be, they'll see it, certainly won't see it when there's leaves on the trees. So that was another change that was made to the plan. So I have to say that Veragee has been very responsive to the concerns raised by residents to the extent that they can with the site plan, and, you know, we appreciate that. So again, we're here to take a look at the lease and approve it. So here's what I consider to be some key provisions. The entire lease is about 12 or 13 pages. I mentioned it's been on the town website. I did have a few people reach out to me directly and, you know, gave them the lease to, to review. And if you have specific questions about anything in it, we have the people here tonight that can certainly answer those questions. But again, key provisions. So number one is the term. You know, it's a 20-year lease. There are three five-year extensions possible at the discretion of the developer. The decommissioning assurance, obviously, that's a big one. That's required after year 15 of operation. The initial amount of the surety would be $97,500. That increases 20% a year, which is about $19,500 for years 16 through 20. And we feel comfortable that that's enough to fully decommission the site if there was a need to do that. Liability insurance, obviously, and the maintenance requirements. The lease requires that the property is mowed at least three times a year. We didn't want this to be overgrown and look unsightly. Also, making sure that the fence line is in good order, if there's branches or something that falls on it or something's broken, that that gets looked at. And then I mentioned the stormwater system and then the operation and maintenance plant. So that's something that also has to be maintained and reviewed to make sure that it's working properly, not causing issues downstream. And then, of course, the rent. $65,000 a year would be the rent. There's no taxes due in addition to that. You know, and that's above market rate for a project of this size. And one of the reasons is because this property is considered the landfill. There's a benefit in terms of being a landfill that Veragee is able to realize, which makes it a little bit better for the town in terms of the rent that we're able to get. There's another reason, and Kurt, tell me if I got this wrong, but the town showed that we consume enough, enough electricity with our buildings to offset what's generated by this facility. And that was, between those two reasons, is why $65,000 a year would be coming to the town. Did I get that? That's correct. Okay. And if you're quick with math, 20 years, that $65,000 a year is about 1.3 million. If all 35 years of the lease are exercised, it'd be about $2.275 million to the town. And I think that's it.
All right. Thanks, Bill. This is the time I'm going to answer any questions and comments, and we're going to start this time on the right side here, my left. So if there's any questions or comments over here, please raise your hand. I see one all the way in the back there.
Dave Schute, Halliday Avenue. My common concern is, what do we do with the disposal of it at the end of this? Who's responsible for that? There must be some cost for disposing of the panels, et cetera.
Yeah. Good afternoon. Good evening. Great question. My name is Brian Fitzgerald of Veragee. So as Bill Hawkins just mentioned, contained in the lease agreement, the project owner, Veragee, has to, has to install a surety bond or a letter of credit, starting in the 15th year of the lease, to cover decommissioning costs. And that doesn't include any potential scrap value. But in the contract, in the lease agreement, it is the project owner's responsibility to fully decommission and remove all components of the project. Panels, racking, conduits, any concrete pad, you know, stone ground roadway would be removed. So it is the project's responsibility to do that, and the project does reserve a surety bond or a letter of credit for decommissioning purposes specifically. That's correct. Yes.
All right. Any other questions on this right side here? All right. Seeing none, I'll move to the middle. I saw this gentleman's hand first.
Hi. Sean Sorrow, Mountain Road. My first question is, when they put the power lines through, they were all worried about the eastern box turtle. And that seems like a prime area for that species of turtle, which is endangered. So is the construction outside of, I don't know what you want to call it, the mating period of the reproductive timeframe of the turtle? And my other question is, it says there's no taxes. You're not going to charge them property tax on all that equipment that sits on the land? That seems like a loss of income.
Yeah, as far as the habitat maps show, there are no endangered or threatened federal or state species on the property. So as far as I know, construction is not being modified to accommodate for that. And as far as the taxes go, we asked for, when we put out the RFP, for one amount, that included a lease payment, what they otherwise would have paid if this were private property for real estate taxes or dirt taxes, and what they would be on the hook for, for personal property taxes, which is the, the value of the equipment. So the $65,000 encompasses all three of those things. And as I said, as Bill mentioned, it's a, it's a very high number for a very small facility. I've done a bunch of these, and it's the highest I've seen because of the fact that it's, the town of Southfield had the accounts to demonstrate to the, to the, to the ENRES program that they could offset the production in, in particular, that that piece of land was considered a landfill, which raised the market value by like 20% for solar.
All right. I saw another hand in front of me.
Victoria Copes, Hickory Street. So I'd like a little bit more detail on the numbers, and that is, since there are a couple of other towns that you're working in, how does it compare, how does the lease payment, how does the lease amount compare to other towns? I mean, actual numbers? And the structure of the lease agreement in terms of the property taxes, how does that compare also with the other towns that were mentioned?
I mean, I can, I can answer that anecdotally. I've done, and I don't know if I feel comfortable giving out actual numbers, even though they're probably public documents, but I can say I've done similar-sized projects on cap landfills. I got like four other towns I'm working on right now, and this is the highest. And every other RFP has been structured the same way, where we just asked for, just make it simple, give us one number that captures the lease and the personal property taxes and any real estate taxes that we think you otherwise would have paid if this were private land. And between either it's been Veragee or another, usually another local, another Connecticut-based company, that have ended up with the highest bid, this is the highest.
I, I still would like a little bit more detail, maybe from Veragee. Do you have any numbers?
I, I mean, I can give you one town. We just, I was just looking at it. It was 55 total instead of 65. It was 55 flat for 20 years, and this is 65. I think another one I was looking at was 51. I personally have some land in Winchester that I lease. It's three times the size, the solar project, and I get half as much because I, I Because I'm not in a municipality and it's not on a landfill. So I said those two things really raise the value of this project for the town.
Yeah. So thanks, Kurt. And to kind of get a little more specific, there are a lot of different factors that go into what you can pay for a land lease. So the condition of the property, how close it is to electrical infrastructure to support the interconnection, because, you know, we've had situations where I've had to upgrade a mile of three-phase and that adds, you know, a million and a half dollars to capex, which creates a higher construction cost, which means I could pay less in rent. So in this situation, the resource interconnection costs are relatively low for the current environment that we're in, where those costs are continuing to increase all the time. As Kurt mentioned, you know, this project pays a high level of rent per megawatt because it is in a specific unrest bucket where we're on the high end of the medium bucket, which pays a higher level of revenue than the large bucket, which is stepping up the size. So we structured the project and we sized the project in a way to maximize revenue and minimize expenses to a certain extent, to try and create a situation where we could, you know, create a compelling offer to the town. These RFPs create a situation where you have multiple market participants bidding for the work and, you know, trying to put your best foot forward to win the work, really. And that's what it creates. You know, I think Kurt hit the point on the numbers. The other projects where we're paying a little less, in summers, the interconnection costs are higher, so we can't pay as much in rent, but it's a little less than this one here. So long-winded way of saying there's a lot of factors that go into it, but this is where we ended up for this one. It is, it's a better economic situation than most.
Yeah. I mean, they, just to add on to that, there was another bid that Veragey came in as the high bidder on, and there was a mile-long line extension for 1.2 million. So the economics, as far as the lease goes, which incorporated all of those other factors, were about half as much. So it was a good spot, a good situation.
Do most of your existing contracts with existing towns in Connecticut have a flat rent for the entire period of the contract? Or is there any increase in the rent that you?
Yeah. Great question. Right now, the majority of our, I should say, the majority of our municipal leases are all at a flat rate. And kind of going back to that last answer in a little bit, when you have a project like this, we bid into the unrest program, for example, and we get a fixed revenue amount for 20 years. So there is no increase in revenue that the project receives. It actually decreases about a half a percent a year as degradation kicks in and you start producing about a half less energy per year. So what we do is run a couple of different scenarios through the financial model that says, what's the maximum amount of lease rate we could pay in total? Then we say, here's the lease schedule if we started at this number and escalated, and then here's the lease schedule if we just gave a flat rate over the 20 years. And what that does is create a situation where the town will earn more dollars in the initial years, making it more valuable to them if you're looking at it on like a discounted cash flow approach at a net present value. So we do analyze, we do analyze a lot of different structures. And when, you know, you see it and there's no escalator built in there, you know, just know that the lease that exists, that creates the same amount of economic value. It starts at a lower rate and escalates to a higher rate, but the net present value shows less value today.
And just to add on, we did, when we looked at three bids, we looked at not just the per-year amount, but we pulled everything back based off of 20, based off of 25, up to 35 years, using different discount rates to see what the best NPV, the best present value for the town was. And this was the best present value for the town by far.
All right. Any other questions here in the center? I see one in the back.
This is Rick Soteel in South Grand. Just curious if this company is local or is it in Oklahoma or someplace?
Hey, Rick. This is Brian with Veragey. We're West Hartford-based. So we started in Hartford eight years ago. But yeah, we're, we started in Hartford eight years ago, six people. We're now in West Hartford, 53 people. So we've grown in Connecticut pretty significantly over the last few years.
Okay. Thank you. I concur with Sean. We all pay taxes on all the equipment that we have year after year. I remember paying another 5% more on all the mortal vehicles that just went up. And yet, you know, $65,000 for 35 years without any increments, I just think, I don't know, maybe you guys are right. I don't know. I have all the details. But since we as residents here in town and also work here in town, we pay on taxes on everything that we have. Thank you.
If I could just comment on that briefly. Yeah, they are paying taxes. It's just in that $65,000 number. They're not escaping taxes. If we take your account from taxes, the number would have been significantly less.
Are there any other questions in the middle here? Let's see. One more.
Why would you put the field in the back? I mean, yeah, I'll play the street bird, but you see.
Well, we, you know, we, this might be a question, I might give this over to Kevin, but the general idea is, we looked at that. It's, I'll let you describe it. It's actually, it's, there's some topography issues, maybe some wetland issues. And on top of that, there is the potential, if the town decides to do so down the line, to use it again as a landfill, which could save the town millions of dollars in doing so. You want to elaborate on the?
Yeah. The landfill, the landfill isn't capped. So we all thought it was in the journey. We had this big block of property. We go through the due diligence and work backwards. If we used the far-right corner, we would be throwing away $3 to $7 million of potential landfill infill. So number one, it made no economic sense. Number two, it made no economic sense. So at the end of the day, this was the best spot to be able to have a solar field in a landfill situation. So I even believe, I started as a volunteer, I'm a volunteer in this. We were under the auspices or the belief that there was a true cap. And in addition, there is a cap, but it doesn't meet modern standards. So we'd actually have to spend a million and a half dollars and then turn it back over to them to get a million dollars. So it's, the fact of the matter is, there's millions still to go into the landfill. Does that answer the question? I guess.
All right. Any other questions here in the middle section?
Hello? Heather Van Duzen, 37 and 49 Phelps Road. Just really a question and a comment. So this is an entirely wooded site, is that correct? The 10 acres?
Yes.
Okay. Just in principle, I'm not a fan of taking a wooded site and turning it into a solar field. I mean, I think the better applications are over parking lots, on roofs, places that are basically already paved or otherwise industrialized. Even farmland that's been clear cut for a long time is a better use. I mean, it's, never mind the issue of endangered designated species, it is wildlife habitat and over time, the land gets piecemealed out for development. So that's my comment.
All right. Thank you. I saw a hand up front here. This gentleman up here.
Rick Neese, I live on Mountain Road also. Just a couple of questions. Buffer in the front, the 50-foot buffer along the road, is that, what's there now in the natural buffer or are you creating something different than that?
Bill Hawkins here. So the 50-foot buffer is the natural buffer that's there, but then behind that, there will be the fence, stockade fence, and they're going to add some plantings in front of that.
Okay. Because that was my question, because most of those are maple trees and all those leaves are going to fall off. So you can put some spruce or pines or something in there for the winter season?
So, yeah, I could take this, but so what we have in the landscape plan currently is a wood stockade fence along the entire Mountain Road frontage, and then planted mountain or evergreen bushes, and then the existing vegetated buffer that's there.
And that's seven-foot fence, you said?
Correct. Yes.
Is that stockade or chain link? I heard you say something about chain link.
Stockade wood fence on the Mountain Road frontage, yes.
Okay. All right. Another question. What is the zoning there?
Current zoning is R-90.
R-90. Is that commercial or residential?
Residential. Residential.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I had. I was just concerned about the winter months, with all the leaves off the trees, what we're going to be looking at, other than that? Thank you.
All right. I think I see one more question here from this Copes.
Is there, I may have missed it, but is there any other benefit to the town other than $65,000 a year?
I mean, I could, I'll touch upon it briefly. I guess turning what, you know, what we could call a brownfield, since landfills, landfill property is generally considered a brownfield, into a solar property is a good thing, I think, for the environment generally. And I think given the science, about 99.5% of scientists agree that the earth is warming and that the town is doing something proactive to deal with climate change issues and producing their own energy, their own emission-free energy is certainly seen as a positive, at least by folks like me. And, you know, on top of that, as you mentioned, the out-of-market economic value that this five-acre property is getting for the town is a huge bonus.
Otherwise, it's mostly financial.
Derek Donnelly, Town Attorney. The other thing I would add is, and I think this is really important, when we talk about tax revenue and the tax revenue that's being generated, currently, that's a landfill that the town owns that generates no revenue. So while I understand people may be in the room and say, okay, you know, $65,000 a year, that's not that much money in the short term, that's money that the town otherwise doesn't generate off this parcel at all, period. Because it's completely town-owned, so thus not taxable, not generating any tax income or anything like that. So in addition to the benefits that Kurt said, I mean, we're also taking something that's essentially not an asset and turning it into an asset for the town.
And in some, it's a minor bonus too, but the footprint, which is roughly five acres versus the cleared area, which is roughly 10, that five acres of cleared area that's usable by the town for anything that doesn't shade the panels. So if they want a lay-down area, a stockpile area for gravel, for leaves, for mulch, whatever it might be, that's five good acres that they can now use if they so choose to. So there's value in having an open site now that they can use.
All right. Are there any other questions in the middle here before I move to the section?
From a mathematical form, it seemed like the gentleman over there in Winchester has three times the property for half the price. Wouldn't you be better going to the private sector and doing it on private people's property? Why would you pay twice or three times more? Something just doesn't add up. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
So municipal properties like this one, which are recognized by the state as a brownfield and then confirmed again as a brownfield by our Phase 1 environmental site assessment, provide a 20% price preference in the programs, which mean you can earn more revenue in total for citing a project at this location, which means we could pay more to the town who owns this location to cite a project here. I do projects with private landowners all over the state and we pay a lot less in rent for projects of equal size and on a per-acre basis, simply because they're, you know, not municipally-owned landfills or brownfields. And trust me, I've had to explain that to private landowners when they see press releases about six acres getting $65,000 per year. But it's, that's the situation. There's a higher revenue amount paid through the programs for projects that meet this qualification.
And there's actually a weird nuance in the program that if you stay under a megawatt, the state, the bidding prices for the power tend to be a little bit higher than the bigger projects, so they could afford to pay more per megawatt than they can for the bigger stuff too. So it just works out that way, unfortunately for private landowners. Good for towns.
Perhaps one of you guys could also discuss just the siting council approval and that process and how going, you know, going with a municipal project is much more favorable to the siting council than a private project.
Yeah, that's a great point. And, you know, any project in Connecticut greater than one megawatt in size has to go to the siting council. It's a pretty significant lift. There's a lot of environmental studies, engineering studies, a longer timeframe. But this project here is sized just below one megawatt for a number of reasons. Interconnection purposes, costs are typically lower, and you can avoid two-year-long transitional transmission cluster studies, which would delay the project 12 to 24 months. Like Kurt mentioned, you know, you have the revenue programs that are sized with a one-megawatt cap. So again, we're kind of maximizing what we can do in this area and trying to create the most value possible on a per-acre basis. So, you know, the property is unique, obviously, and we couldn't use the landfill. There's wetlands that is pretty significant on the western half of the property, so we couldn't really go larger here. This is just about the biggest size you can do and try to create the most economic, the most economically positive situation for the town.
I see one more hand in the way back there.
Hi, Eric Parent, 700 North Street. On the plot, there was a reference to certain work that had to be done on the land. Who will be paying for that work?
In regard to the?
Mowing and other, if I recall, I don't have a, it'd be good to go back to the slide, but there were certain things.
Yeah. So in this situation where Veragey leases the land, there's no capex expenditures required of the town. It is simply, you know, a real estate lease. Veragey, as a project developer and operator, will be responsible for all development costs, all construction costs, all financing and long-term operations and maintenance costs. So the project bears the responsibility of any and all operations and maintenance, mowing, fixing any electrical failures that come up, you name it.
Okay. So the net impact per year is $65,000 to the town?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, discounting it at like a 5% rate for 20 years, I'm calculating like an $800,000 benefit. If you go all 35 years, if they were to renew, it's well over a million dollars. And I didn't know this coming in, but we bought this land because it was potentially tainted from the landfill, which I didn't realize. So really, the land doesn't really have much alternate use that I can see. So it seems like a pretty good deal to me. Thanks.
Thank you. One last time, any questions in the middle section before I move on? All right. Seeing none. Are there any questions on this side? I see a hand up front here.
Betsy McCourt, South Grand. I actually have two questions. My first question is, how long of a construction project is this?
Construction on a project like this will take anywhere from three to four months.
Thank you. My second question is, the bond that starts at the 15-year mark, who's responsible for decommissioning from the first 15 years?
The project is still responsible for decommissioning for the first 15 years.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this side? All right. Seeing none. One final sweep. I see a hand over there.
Can we make comments later on? No.
Yeah, there will be a comment period, but you can make comments now too if you'd like. You don't wait for that?
Okay. Whatever.
It's up to you.
I don't need a microphone. I'm loud.
[laughing].
I'm vehemently opposed to this whole project and I just want it to be known, and I don't think we should do this. This destroys the aesthetic of our town. I'm totally against it. And I think people that are going to be right across this on Mountain Road, I mean, it's an eyesore. What, what about resale values? How does this affect resale values? I'm not buying what you're selling. You could su- sugarcoat it all you want. I'm not buying it. I've done my research. This is bad news. And I think everybody should do their research as well. How about the town of East Windsor? They rejected this whole thing, this whole solar bullshit. Excuse my language. It's pissing me off because this is going through, this has already been, you know, torn up, the trees, the wildlife. This is gonna affect so much and I'm strongly in opposition to it. And I think everybody should do their research before they start this. They're sugarcoating it, believe me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. One final sweep here. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing... We have to get approval from the town meeting first before we have a starting.
Correct, yeah. If approved, it could start before the end of the year.
I see one other hand.
Uh, hi, Anne Huntington, right across the street from this location on Mountain Road. My question has to do with something that you said earlier. The fact that this is less than a certain size, that meant that you didn't have to do certain environmental studies? Is that what you said?
No, no, that's not, that's not what I said. You know, I just said we didn't have to go to the citing council for approval, that's all. It was, it had to be locally approved through the planning and zoning commission. Uh, we still have to get a stormwater permit through Connecticut D. We still had to do, uh, any and all research through state historic preservation office, cultural reconnaissance surveys, which were completed, wetland delineations, NDB consultation with D, which is a natural diversity database for threatened and endangered species. So we still did the full gamut.
I, I, if I may, I think this, the citing council process is for projects over a megawatt, this is under a megawatt, and that can typically take, uh, depending on, only because they're backed up, because they do all projects, telecommunications, all energy projects over a certain size. That can take time, years, and time takes money. And the fact that they were able to do this and give it all to local jurisdiction with all local decision-making, save time and money, and I think that was the only point. They had to do the exact same type of environment review though, to get planning board, uh, wetland approval and all that. It's the same, it's the same process, just a different jur, just a different agency in charge.
Yeah, it really just meant that the local town, the town had control of the entire permitting process.
And it's typically what, what towns want, right. The main line of complaint you hear in like the East Windsors is that the citing council doesn't take into account local town considerations. And in this case, you had really three town agencies and town meeting weighing in, so it's, it's exactly what, you know, a lot of opponents typically desire.
Yeah, the, the town has, has full control in this situation versus a citing council project where they supersede local zoning jurisdiction.
And I would point out to the comment of the East Windsor town over there, they're encountering a lot of citing councils, so nothing's going, not a lot of their projects, if any, are going through local zoning authorities.
And I think they're looking at, correctly from long, hundreds of megawatts, not one megawatt. They have a very, very large project over there, not, not anything like this.
All right, any other questions before we move on to the next item? All right, seeing none, we are going to move on to the acceptance of the West Southfield Cemetery. Uh, we'll turn this over to the town attorney, Derek Donnelly.
All right, Derek Donnelly, town attorney. Um, just a thing for context, and you can see on the map there, we're talking about the West Southfield Cemetery, that's on Mountain Road between, um, the center of West Southfield and Spalding School. So as you're driving, uh, from Spalding towards, uh, West Southfield, you'll see it on the right-hand side there. The Cemetery Association, uh, has, has managed this property extremely well. They've done a great job for a number of years. Unfortunately, that, um, organization is getting smaller, uh, almost by the day. And, uh, you know, just does not believe that they'll be able to continue, uh, with the care and upkeep of the cemetery, um, you know, moving forward into the future. So they have decided to dissolve. In doing so, they have, uh, offered to transfer the cemetery to the town of Southfield. And, uh, the town will still be responsible for the care and maintenance of the cemetery as we are already, um, uh, under statute. But if they simply walk away from that, uh, we then have to go through a statutory process to accept that the cemetery is town road, it's costly, and it's time-consuming, uh, as town land rather. It's costly and it's time-consuming. So when the Cemetery Association approached the town, um, we met with them several times and discussed, um, you know, simply a transfer of the cemetery to the town, along with the resources. Yep, this one works. Um, along with the resources of the Cemetery Association to continue to pay for the care and upkeep of the cemetery in the long term. So the town currently does manage or maintain several cemeteries in town. And we do have a cemetery fund with the Board of Finance that pays for those things. This would augment those funds and also keep a separate trust, uh, that the town would maintain, uh, from the Cemetery Association, itself specifically designated for this, um, this parcel. So to get here, uh, the Cemetery Association met with the town, they then amended its bylaws to allow for the donation of the cemetery to the town. Uh, the Association formally requested for the town to accept the cemetery. The Board of Selectmen at their May twenty-first meeting formally accepted it. And then the Board of Finance also approved this as well. It had the discussion about the funds and accepting the funds, how the Board of Finance would utilize those funds for the care of this and other cemeteries in the future. So, and I think it's worth noting, it's very important tonight, under the, uh, charter, the town meeting is only approving the acceptance of the land. The donation of the funds is not something that has to go through the town meeting. So what we're talking tonight is specifically the land, although it's important to consider that this also comes with, uh, roughly a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in funding that will be specifically designated, uh, for this and, and cemetery. Should the town meeting approve the acceptance, the town will file all necessary records on the town's land records, formally memorialize and record the decision, uh, and then work with the Cemetery Association to transfer the property. Uh, the town will set up a formal trust account to hold the Association's money, uh, which was discussed with the Board of Finance at their last meeting, and to enable the town to run the business of the cemetery. The Cemetery Association has a, um, the Cemetery Association uses a service, uh, that actually runs the day-to-day of the cemetery, opens for...
Septon.
Thank you. I drew a line there. A septon service that, uh, runs the day-to-day of the se, uh, of the cemetery itself, charges, uh, for the various plots. There are plots, uh, available here that would generate additional revenue. And, uh, and also works with the funeral homes in order to open the cemetery. So, um, that, uh, program would continue, so there would not be an added administrator cost to the town as part of this as well. The plan is to set up a small advisory board to oversee the running of the cemetery. It would be a town board with open meetings. The, uh, town will, uh, as I said, continue with the septon so that they can continue to provide the services, uh, to the cemetery and the town's behalf. And the town is engaged in similar activities for other cemeteries in its possession. So all in all, we thought that, uh, you know, look, if, if the town meeting doesn't approve this, uh, you know, odds are we'll be back here in the future because the Cemetery Association simply can't continue and will have to go through a different process in order to, uh, in order to accept the cemetery. This is a obligation of the town to maintain cemeteries under the general statutes. So if, uh, we thought this was the best way to streamline it, we had a wonderful relationship with the Cemetery Association and appreciate their consideration to entrust this very important duty to the town.
All right, thanks Derek. Uh, we're gonna entertain questions and comments. I'm gonna start on this side of the room. Are there any questions and comments regards to this? All right, seeing none. Any questions and comments in the middle section? Seeing none. Any questions or comments? I see one over here on the left side.
Ian Borg, thirteen ten Mountain Road. What's the difference between bullet number three on the last slide and the last bullet? They appear to be the same exact thing to me. In terms of an advisory board and oversight?
Yeah, I, I believe that was just a, uh, a double print on there. The advisory board would be in charge of the oversight, uh, of the cemetery. So it's just one word that we're talking about here.
Any other questions on the left side here? I see one hand. We'll check that out. Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? One last time across the room. Seeing none, I will move on to the next item, which is the transfer of Phelps Road Cemetery property to Mountain Burying Ground Association. Turn this over to Bill Hawkins.
Thanks Colin. Uh, so another cemetery, um, topic here. So this would be to transfer the Phelps Road Cemetery to the Mountain Burying Ground Association. So back in seventeen eighty-eight, Elijah Phelps deeded the zero-point-six-five acre property to the town of Southfield and Granby. It's indicated on this map, um, it reads original cemetery, um, zero-point-six-five acres. Um, the Mountain Burying Ground Association has maintained the cemetery for about a hundred and fifty-eight years, since eighteen sixty-seven. In nineteen ninety-six, they purchased the adjacent property, which kind of wraps around two sides of the cemetery, indicated on the map, as the one-point-five acres. They did that because there was really no more capacity in the cemetery, it was for future burials. The association, as I mentioned, they've maintained the original cemetery parcel. They've never requested funding for the town, from the town for maintenance of that, uh, cemetery. And then last year, they approached the town and asked, would we be interested in transferring the property to them? So that's the reason that we're here tonight and, um, so the reason for the request, really, uh, as I mentioned, they've always maintained the property. Ownership of it really simplifies insurance and administrative responsibilities for them. In terms of the financial impact to the town, there would be none. Obviously, it doesn't, uh, it's not subject to taxes now. That would remain the case if it's owned by the Mountain Burying Ground Association. State statutes, um, there's a statute for everything, it's no different for cemeteries. You know, provided they meet a couple of the criteria, which they do currently, for the one-and-a-half acres that they own, they would remain tax-exempt if they were to acquire the zero-point-six-five acres we're talking about. Um, they are a legitimate corporation. They were incorporated on May seventh, eighteen sixty-six. They started maintaining the cemetery the next year. I would argue this probably should have happened a hundred and fifty-eight years ago, but I guess better late than never. Next slide, Colin. So to get here tonight, as I mentioned, the, the interesting twist with this was that Mr. Phelps deeded the property not only to Southfield, but also to the town of Granby and was very specific, it was even a portion of the town of Granby. But nonetheless, we had to approach, uh, Granby, our neighbors, and, um, discuss this with them. So I reached out to my counterpart there, we had a couple of discussions about this, um, and they kind of laid out the path that they had to go through, which is similar, minus a town meeting, uh, for them. But their Granby, you know, the Board of Selectmen did pass a resolution to transfer their interest in this property, uh, back in January, so that's been done. Our local planning and zoning commission issued a positive report to the Board of Selectmen in terms of the transfer. And then, um, the Board of Selectmen formally approved the transfer and referred that action to town meeting, um, back in March. That's the reason that we're here tonight. So I think that's, yep, that's the rundown on that one. Happy to answer any questions there may be.
All right, thanks Bill. Are there any questions or comments? I'll start on the right side of this room. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Any questions or comments in the center of the room? All right, seeing none. Any questions or comments on the left side of the room? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the next item, that is the right-to-farm ordinance. I had some members of the agricultural community reach out to me in regards to, uh, requesting that the town do this. Essentially, it's a policy statement, uh, reaffirming Connecticut's right-to-farm law, which exempts farms from meeting specified conditions and following generally accepted, uh, agricultural practices, certain nuisance laws, regulations and ordinances concerning odor, noise and other objectionable farming byproducts. Uh, the statute does not exempt from nuisances caused by negligence or willful or reckless misconduct. Mainly aims to protect farms and agricultural operations from nuisance lawsuits. Uh, so acceptance of this ordinance would just simply reaffirm Southfield's commitment to our agriculture and farming communities and their established practices. We have a list of, um, communities within Connecticut that have, uh, already approved these right-to-farm ordinances at the local level. And at this point, I will entertain any questions or comments. I'll start on this side of the room this time. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments in the middle? See one right there.
Sean Saram, Mountain Road. Um, is that only applied to established farms or anybody that's starting a new farm or homesteaders? What's, what's the birth of the umbrella?
So the text of the ordinance follows the Connecticut general statutes. And in order to qualify, if, you know, is any present or future agricultural operations conducted or maintained in a manner consistent with accepted customs and standards of the agricultural industry on a recognized farm, which is engaged in the act of farming. And, and that's how you qualify. So, uh, the short answer to your question is, is yes. If someone came in and established a new farm, it would apply to them, provided they met those other criteria.
Any other questions or comments in the middle? Any questions or comments over here? I see one.
Uh, thank you. Neil Hornish, Thrall Avenue. Uh, can you explain what protections this ordinance would give the farmers that they do not currently receive under the Connecticut statute nineteen A three forty-one? Thank you.
It doesn't give any further protections. It just reinforces its, uh, policy statement on the town, just like the other ones do, reaffirming our commitment to the agricultural community.
Yeah, I, I would add that the protections, I think, in this are mostly built in for, uh, towns. So here, we've added at the end in section C, nothing in this article shall restrict the powers of Southfield Conservation Commission, Southfield's Planning and Zoning Department, Southfield's Building Department, or the North Central Health Department by the Connecticut general statutes. And, and, you know, essentially, that is, the statute does read in the way that it doesn't exempt those local authorities. But, uh, we, uh, we also codify that as well. So I, I think there are some, uh, specified protections to all of the residents on top of the policy statements of the farmers.
Any other questions on this right side? All right, any other final questions? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, which is the lease renewal of Strahan Farms subdivision, open space to Novak Farms LLC. And I'll turn this back over to Bill Hawkins.
Yep, thanks Colin. So, um, the next two items are very similar in a slight piece. So the next two items are very similar in a slide a piece. So this property is owned by the town. We lease it to Noack Farms, Suffield-based Noack Farms. About 10 acres, they grow tobacco on it. It was a five-year lease, they're seeking another five-year lease term. The rate is $3,024 per year. That's about $15,620 over the course of the lease. There's no option to renew included, so in five years, we either go out to bid, or we are back at a town meeting to renew. You know, it's a very favorable lease for the farmer. You know, to me, and I say this to the Board of Selectmen who approved this and referred it to town meeting back in April, that it's not necessarily about making money for the town. It certainly covers any costs that we have in administering these leases, which is mostly my time, you know, during the year. But it's more about keeping the land in active agriculture and maintained. What we don't want is to have these parcels getting overgrown, start getting complaints, and then it's a burden on public work staff or other contractors that we hire to deal with. So it's worked out well. Noack Farms has maintained the property, kept it in good order, and one of the benefits of Noack Farms is they lease the property adjacent to this, so they don't have to go through the subdivision, which is shown here on the map. It's the Stratton Farms subdivision, we call it. It's off of Copper Hill Road. You don't have to travel through there to get to the property. You can just, you know, through the adjacent land that he leases, it works. So that's one of the benefits as well. But, yeah, these are just one slide a piece. Questions on that?
Any questions or comments on this? I'll start over here. Questions or comments on the right side? Questions or comments in the middle? Questions or comments on this side? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the next item. It's a lease renewal of Malick Farms subdivision open space to Blanco Farms LLC, and I'll get it over to Bill Hawkins.
All right, thanks Colin. Yep, another one. So Blanco Farms has leased this 15, a little over 15 acres from the town for the last five years. They use it to grow corn. They're seeking another five-year lease term, $60 per acre. So over the course of the five-year lease, it would be about $4,560 due to the town. A similar situation in that Blanco Farms owns the property adjacent to this, so they don't have to travel through the subdivision. We call it the Malick Farms subdivision, but the road is leased circle, it's off of Mapleton Avenue. In total, the parcel's about 32 acres, but it's another situation where we have agricultural land, want to keep it active. Blanco has done a great job on the property. We've had no complaints over the last five years, they kept it in good order. And again, it's about maintaining the property as well that we have. So it's been a good lease for us, and we'd like to see that renewed. Again, no option to renew would be included, so in five years, we either go out to bid, or we're back at town meeting, seeking another extension. So that's that one.
Thanks Bill. Any questions or comments on this side of the room? Questions or comments in the middle section? Questions or comments on the right side? All right, seeing none, that is the end of our public information session. I'm going to give it a minute or two here, and then we'll begin the town meeting. We're running a little behind, so just give us a minute. Thanks.
Okay, better? Our first round of business is to elect a moderator for tonight. Do I hear any nominations?
Chris Lambert, 22 Old Farms Lane. I nominate Ed McInney to act as the moderator this evening.
A nomination has been made to elect Ed McInney as moderator for tonight's meeting. Do I hear a second? Are there any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none, Ed McInney will be the moderator for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, and good evening, one and all. If you'd be good enough to join me and pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So now I ask the town clerk to, hmm, to read the call of this evening's meeting.
Notice is hereby given that a special town meeting of the inhabitants of the Town of Suffield, Connecticut, qualified to go in a town meeting, will be held at the auditorium in the Suffield Middle School, 350 Mountain Road, Suffield, Connecticut, on Thursday, June 26th, 2025, at 7:00 PM for the following purposes to wit. Number one, to consider and act upon the sale of 1148 South Street as approved by the Board of Selectmen. Number two, to consider and act upon a lease agreement with Veragey for 5.8 acres of town property located on the north of the landfill to be used for a solar farm for a term of 20 years with three five-year extensions options, as approved by the Board of Selectmen. Number three, to consider and act upon the acceptance of the cemetery property on Mountain Road, owned by West Suffield Cemetery Association, as approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. Number four, to consider and act upon the transfer of Phelps Road Cemetery property to the Mountain Burying Ground Association, as approved by the Board of Selectmen. Number five, to consider and act upon a right to farm ordinance, as approved by the Board of Selectmen. Number six, to consider and act upon the five-year lease renewal through March 31st, 2030, for the 10.11 acre Stratton Farms open space property to Noack Farms LLC, as approved by the Board of Selectmen. Number seven, to consider and act upon the five-year lease renewal through March 31st, 2030, for the 15.2 acre Malick open farms, open space property to Blanco Farms, as approved by the Board of Selectmen. Copies of supporting materials may be found on the Town of Suffield's website at www.suffieldct.gov, or by visiting the town clerk's office, 83 Mountain Road, Suffield, Connecticut, beginning on June 18th, 2025, dated Suffield, Connecticut, on the 17th day of June, 2025. Board of Selectmen, Colin Mole, First Selectman, Claire Blanco, Selectman, Mel Shafitz, Selectman, Kathleen Harrington, Selectman, Peter Hill, Selectman, published in the Hartford Current on June 18th, 2025.
Thank you. All right. Now I'll take a...
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. May I make a motion to suspend the rules and allow for a voice vote this evening?
Well, yes you may. I was just coming to that. Do I have a second for that motion to suspend the rules and allow for a voice vote? All those in favor? Opposed? Nay? The ayes have it? Matter's passed. We will suspend the rules and have voice votes on these, on these various motions as we go forward. All right. All right, so we have the first motion regarding the sale of 1148 South Street. I'll take a motion on that.
I move... I move to approve.
Thank you. The town clerk's going to try to actually make the motion.
Resolved that the town meeting of the Town of Suffield approves the sale of 1148 South Street to Martin and Downey for $515,000. Further resolved that the First Selectman is authorized to sign and execute all documents necessary to complete the above transaction.
I'll take a second on that. Very good, second. All right, now, we've all been sitting around, or most of us have been sitting around for the last hour or so, so I'm going to ask only for comments on these motions, and then we'll go to a vote. I think we can expedite this. I know that the First Selectman asked for comments and questions previously, so we'll go on that. Do I have any comments regarding that first motion, which is the sale of 1148 South Street? Please wait till you get the microphone, and then give your name and your address.
Sean Saram, Mountain Road, Suffield. How do we come about that property? Is that taxed?
Hey, Bill Hawkins here, Director of Planning and Development. So the town acquired the property about 25 years ago, and it was part of a parcel that was supposed to be subdivided with an industrial road that connected to Firestone. Long story short, that obviously never happened, and the developer, who posted about a million-dollar bond for that, said, "Give me my bond back, and I'll give you this property." So that's essentially how the town acquired it, 2001.
Looks like it has a house on it, though.
No, there's, maybe in the past, there was a house on it, but not now. Currently, it's vacant.
Any other comments on that motion, 1148 South Street? All those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye. Any opposed? Anybody abstained? The ayes have it. Thanks, we'll move on to the next one. I'll take a motion on the second item, which is the lease of, hmm, 20-year lease with three five-year extensions. Oh, this is the, regarding the solar panel. So I'll take that motion.
Resolved that the town of Suff, that the town meeting of the Town of Suffield authorizes a 20-year lease with three five-year extensions through 2060 for a 5.8 acre of the town property to the north of the transfer station at 2715 Mountain Road to Veragey. Further resolved that the First Selectman is authorized to sign and execute all documents necessary to complete the above transaction.
I'll take a second. Do I have a second? Second, all right? Again, as we did previously, I understand that there was a lengthy discussion, questions and answers and explanations regarding this. I'll take comments on this proposed lease to Veragey of this property. Do I have any comments? Yes, sir. Wait for the, here's the microphone, name and address.
Rick Sotill, 426 South Branch Street. Why you even give us these papers, vote yes or no, if you're always going to do these voice, voice modifications, instead of having us vote, do it with these documents that you gave us in the beginning?
Yeah, so they can push things through.
Do you have any comments other than that? Any other comments?
Victoria Coates, Hickory Street. I may not understand everything, I'm sure I don't regarding this, but I encourage you to vote no on this. $65,000 to me just isn't enough revenue to offset the impact to the environment and the people that live across the street. I would not want this project across the street from where I live.
Any other comments regarding this proposed lease? I don't see any others. Is there anybody else in the back? Name and address, please.
Skydome Market, 75 Rodney Hill Street, Suffield. I have mixed feelings about solar, generally speaking, but if you're going to put it anywhere, it should not, in my opinion, be on productive farming, and this is not. This is also on brownfield property. And while I'm not an expert in terms of the lease prices on similar situations, I know enough about solar to know that the town is getting a pretty good deal here. I also know that the state of Connecticut supports these type of projects on brownfields. That may not mean anything to us in this room, but I do feel that if it's going to go anywhere, it should be on this type of property. I would also say that I am familiar with this developer, not directly, but through other business associations that I have, and they're well-regarded. And when it went through planning and zoning, there was quite a bit of attention paid to their bond, to their own end plan, and I think the town is well-protected. So I would support this.
Any additional comments regarding this? Regarding this proposed for the lease, solar lease? Ken, I'm here.
Charles Zainer, Diane Lane. First, I'd like to say the discussion of the Varokey lease was very helpful, and it made me feel good about how the town runs its business. I'm not so sure, I'm in favor of a voice vote on this. I agree with that gentleman over there, that I'd like to see a, you know, I guess, no count on this, because I think it's closer than a voice vote, might accurately reflect.
Well, we'll resolve that if we need to, but we'll start with the voice vote. Any further, any further comments regarding that? Yes, ma'am, back here.
It's not understanding and incorrect of the ordinance if we're taking six votes tonight, but we're picking the three ballots, so I don't understand how we're going to vote by ballot on the six items, if we only have three ballots.
Any further comments regarding, regarding the motion that's on the floor right now? Any further comments? No? All those in favor of the motion as proposed, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right. So what we're going to do now is we're going to do, please raise your hands if you say aye, and I'll have the town clerk count the votes, and then we'll go to the nays. Please raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion, which is in favor of the lease. Please keep your hands up until they're finished counting. You can put your hands down, all those opposed, please raise your hands. Clerks will count, please keep your hands up until they count. You put your hands down, thank you. All right, well, ladies and gentlemen, there was a, the vote in favor of the leases was 33, and the votes opposing it was 23. But there was some concern about folks putting their hands down before they had a chance to vote. So now to this lady's question up here, we have an opportunity to vote by paper ballot. How about that? So there's a box over there, you see that the town clerk has put a box on that table. Please use the yellow... Please use the yellow ballots which you receive, tear them in half, and take your vote. And what we're going to do is, we're going to do it by sections, and I'd like to do the section all the way to my left, to your right. Please bring your ballot down. Again, the yellow ballots, either yes or no, and put them in that box over there, and then we're going to recount. Yellow ballots, please. All right, it looks like that section is done. Those in the middle, please come down and put your ballots in the box. Yellow ballots, if it's a different color, it won't be counted. Please put the yellow ballot in the box. Okay, I think we've got everybody in the center. Those on my right, your left, please come down and put your vote in the box. Again, yellow ballots. Is there anyone else we missed somehow? Doesn't look like it. Last the town clerk, and she's already doing it, recount to us.
Can we move on while they're counting?
No. We'll wait until the vote is counted, and then we'll move on to the other. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is the vote. It's slightly changed. Apparently, people didn't vote the first instance. The yeses are forty-one, the nos remain at twenty-three, so the motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to the next resolution, which deals with the West Sem, the West Southfield Cemetery Association. I'll take a motion on that.
Resolved that the town meeting of the Town of Southfield accepts the transfer of the cemetery property on Mountain Road, owned by the West Southfield Cemetery Association, as approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. Further resolved that the First Selectmen is authorized to sign and execute all documents necessary to complete the above transaction.
Do I have a second on that resolution? I have a second back here. Is there any, again, as with the others, do I have any comments regarding this motion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, it's unanimous. Thank you, we'll move on to the next one. The next one is the five-year, do I have this, yeah, five-year lease renewal on the Stratton Farms property. No? Sorry, I got ahead of myself. Turn the paper over at the wrong moment. This is regarding the cemetery on Phelps Road to the Mountain Burying Ground Association. I'll take a resolution on that one.
Resolved that the town meeting of the Town of Southfield authorizes the transfer of the Phelps Road Cemetery to the Mountain Burying Ground Association for no consideration. Further resolved that the First Selectmen is authorized to sign and execute all documents necessary to complete the above transaction.
Do I have a second? Is there, are there any comments regarding that? I have two seconds. Are there any comments regarding this motion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it's unanimous again. Thank you. Next one has to do with the right-to-farm ordinance. I'll take a motion on that.
Resolved that the town meeting of the Town of Southfield approves the right-to-farm ordinance.
Do I have a second? Second. Are there any comments regarding this particular motion? Yes, sir. Name and address.
Thank you.
Neil Mortis, Sproul Avenue. I just see this as a completely unnecessary ordinance. It doesn't provide farmers any protections that aren't already established under state law. So if the town at the border wants to say, "Welcome to Southfield," or "The Right-to-Farm Town," they can do that today. There, I just don't see why we need an ordinance for this. Thank you.
Are there any other comments regarding the right-to-farm ordinance? All those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
One nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Next one, the, we're going to the five-year, now we get to the five-year lease renewal for the Stratton Farms Open Space. I'll take a motion on that.
Resolved that the town meeting of the Town of Southfield authorizes a five-year lease renewal through March thirty-first, twenty thirty, for the ten point eleven-acre property known as Stratton Farms Open Space Parcel to Noack Farms LLC. Further resolved that the First Selectmen is authorized to sign and execute all documents necessary to complete the above transaction.
I'll take a second. I have a second back here. Any discussion, I'm sorry, any comments regarding this motion, which is the lease, farm lease? All those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Next one is the five-year lease for Malick Farms' Open Space property to Blanco Farms'. I'll take a motion.
Resolved that the town meeting of the Town of Southfield authorize a five-year lease renewal through March thirty-first, twenty thirty, for the fifteen point two-acre property known as Malick Farms Open Space Parcel to Blanco Farms LLC. Further resolved that the First Selectmen is authorized to sign and execute all documents necessary to complete the above transaction.
Take a second on that motion, and I have a second back here. Are there any comments regarding that motion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Do I have a nay back here? Motion passes. Thank you, I'll take a motion adjourned. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good evening.